Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Wednesday, February 12th, 2020. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a citizen advisory group to the city council charged with making recommendations concerning land use plans, planning processes, and on matters of plan implementation. All regular meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission are recorded for record retention and transcription. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion, commission, action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to redocumentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. Oral testimony may be restricted to no more than three minutes per person. Agenda item number one is the roll call and disclosure of conflict of interest, ex parte communication, and site visit. So Aislinn, if we could have you call the roll, and if each commissioner would please state their name, what area they're from, and then anything they may need to disclose.
Jared Burnt.
My name is Jared Burnt. I live in the Highland area. I made a visit to agenda item number four, and I have nothing else to report.
Jill Kirkham.
My name is Jill Kirkham. I live in the Alameda area. I made a site inspection to number four, and I have nothing else to report.
Jack Moore.
My name is Jack Moore, and I live in the Old Town area, and I made a site visit to agenda item number four, and I have nothing else to report.
Shing Tzu Ru.
My name is Shing Tzu Ru. I live in the Highland area. I made a site visit to agenda number four.
Ryan Satterfield.
I'm Ryan Satterfield from the Highland area. I also made a site visit to item number four and have nothing else to report.
Kaylee White.
My name is Kaylee White. I live in the Alameda area. I was unable to make a site visit, and I have nothing else to report.
Dorothy Ricks is excused this evening.
Very good, thank you, Aislinn. All right, agenda item number three. This time is to elect chair and vice chair. This time has been set aside for the commission to elect a new chair and vice chair. So commissioners, as we discussed in our pre-meeting, we would now be open to any nominations. Aislinn?
You skipped agenda item two.
Oh, I did. I skipped right over it. I guess I'm just too excited to get out of this seat. All right. Agenda item number two, approval of minutes. Any comments on the minutes?
The comments, the minutes look good, and I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Excellent.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Moore, seconded by White.
Seconded by Kirkham.
She beat ya. Sorry. She beat ya. She was just quiet.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Burnt?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Ru?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, now we're on to agenda item number three. So commissioners, as stated, it would now be open time for nominations, as you see fit.
I would like to make a motion to elect Dorothy Ricks to the chairman role, and Kaylee White to the vice chair role.
Seconded.
Very good. So there's been a motion and a second. I think that we will go ahead and just vote on those joint, as the motion was made. So the motion for Dorothy Ricks as the chair, and Kaylee White as the vice chair. Aislinn, would you call the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Burnt?
Yes.
Ru?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. That will take effect at our next meeting, then. Agenda item number four is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding requests by Gabe Monroe of Addit Self-Storage LLC, represented by RMEs, for a conditional use permit to allow new self-storage units at 3934 Jason Avenue. The property is located in a commercial general zoning district, which allows storage units through the conditional use permit process. With that, I will open the public hearing, and if we could hear from the applicant.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Mitchell Greer. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying at 600 East Oak Street. A lot of new faces here, so we'll have some excitement, I guess. So this is a project that we have been actually working on for, I'd say, close to a year. We've been kind of trying to assemble a design that we feel like can fit into that area, maybe be a little more of a positive influence on the neighborhood than what some of the previous uses of that property have been. I know there has been a number of previous owners that have created some disruption to the neighborhood, and we're hoping that this proposal will be maybe not perfect, as any of them are. You know, there's usually a choice between nothing and a project, and so we think this has been thoughtfully done with the neighborhood in mind. So I'll talk through some of the design elements that we have done. Kind of the most important thing related to this project is it's a fortress-style storage unit facility. We don't have another one like that in Pocatello. These are considered maybe a little bit of a higher-end type of storage facility. And some of the interesting features of the fortress style is when you're within the neighborhood or within the adjoining streets, essentially what you see is something that looks like a fence. So it's really, you don't really know that there's a storage unit there, or it doesn't really feel like a storage facility is next to you. Some of the other things that we have done, or we're proposing to do, is, you know, we're adding some architectural elements to the exterior, so it's not just going to be a solid, you know, metal building. There will be some stone features and some decorative concrete, things like that, to create some interest and make it so it's just not so stark. And then we set everything back a little bit so that we could have, you know, a nice landscaped feature, and we believe, you know, that will be fairly intensely landscaped so that it, you know, that it creates some interest and some visual character for this neighborhood, as well as anyone else that would be traveling in this area. We also did preserve a setback, a 10-foot setback from this adjoining property that could be landscaped, and I see that the staff has, in their recommendations, asked for that to be also landscaped, and we kind of intended that to be the case, although our drawings don't necessarily show that. The other kind of really important element, and this is where some of our design came into place, we've had a lot of changes, but just trying to figure out how to fit this in here and then have kind of an entry that maybe is least impactful to the neighborhood as possible. So you can see we're proposing to access off of Jason, not McDougal. Jason is more of a through street, but kind of the real meat of it is, there's really not residents here where our access is, and that's where our traffic and our business is going to be more centrally located, which is kind of adjacent to that existing commercial-type use there. So those are kind of the, a brief, you know, 100-foot overview of the project. We're proposing a number of units in there. We do have some parking as required by the code here by what we believe is the, will be the office structure, and we did create some, you know, some different architecture there where the office is, and that's to keep people from, you know, being lost in that neighborhood so that they know where to go and where to do their business. And we have kind of another architectural element on this corner, which is kind of a sign feature, just something to create architectural interest as well. We believe this is a great location for this facility. It's right by the interchange and would be, you know, overall an asset to the community to have something like this here. Again, this type of facility. Another element that we have in this project is this middle building will be kind of a conditioned storage, so there's very little of that in our market as well, so that will be, those spaces will be conditioned. So the kind of, the approach that we have is, again, to be as light of impact on the neighborhood as possible. And one thing that we need to be considering as a group is that we're not talking about this project in relation to houses or no development. We're talking about this project in relation to a commercial development. And so one thing, you know, if we could just speculate a little bit, what might go in here, other than something like this? Well, when I look at that, I know in my business, we've seen a fair amount of interest or potential interest in convenience stores near the interchange, so that might be something that would go in there. So if a convenience store went in there, would that be more impactful on the neighborhood necessarily than what we're proposing here? And I would say certainly from a traffic perspective, an operations perspective, all that kind of things would be much more impactful on what is this area than what this proposal is today. And if you look at this, kind of how it fits in here, there was a convenience store here at one time. This was kind of, when it was operating as a convenience store, trucks would park in there and stage and all kinds of stuff. And then, you know, more recently, there was a, you know, some sort of commercial venture that had storage containers and really left the project in a fairly decent mess, and our clients have already started the process of trying to clean it up and make it a little more nice for that area. So you can see that a lot of this area consists of kind of storage, you know, although it's not maybe designated as that, there are, you know, this is kind of a boat storage, boat repair kind of thing with outdoor storage, you know, directly across the street. This area is kind of a more of a light industrial type of use. Again, there's a contractor shop here with some outdoor storage, and then I believe they're more or less using that common sense as just storage, a little bit of overflow storage and things. So we believe as far as the neighborhood goes, it fits, you know, it kind of fits with the neighborhood. We've tried to make it fit as well as we can with the residential area, and we think that it's, you know, it's a good alternative for something that needs to happen in this area. Obviously, this has been more of an area, at least these properties that are along Fifth Avenue have kind of started to decline a little bit. We think that this development will help raise that area up and be a benefit overall to the overall area. So, you know, again, I just want to kind of close with the fact that, you know, our design that we created here, we think is a nice design that fits with the neighborhood. It'll definitely be an improvement over what has been there in the past. It's as sensitive to the neighborhood as any commercial development that would go in there would be. It's architectural interesting. We've created a lot of different architectural elements to give it kind of some residential feel, as well as kind of still meet the goals of our project. We're going to finish out the street improvements, so we'll have sidewalk connectivity associated with that. There are chunks of this property that have never been improved as far as finished with the street improvements. And so, again, keep in mind, and we don't have too many, too much opposition that we've had here, but we like to kind of reserve most of our presentation until after the public comment, but in this case, we've kind of gone a little further. Just as you're considering or deliberating on this proposal, remember that it could be, it could be something that's much more disruptive to the neighborhood than what we're proposing here. So with that, we believe that we meet all of the conditions of approval. I'm not going to go through all of those. I think you guys have probably had a chance to read it. We prepared a pretty decent narrative, which addresses our perspective related to that. It meets the comprehensive plan, or the goals in the comprehensive plan. And so I just ask that you approve it as presented, and we'll move forward and get something nice built.
Okay, thank you, Mitch. Couple questions.
Okay.
Anybody have questions? I had one. If you do get approval on this, how soon do you see stuff starting to happen on site? Is the project for this year?
Yeah, I mean, they're definitely would like to start constructing, and I think it's, you know, they're not going to be in a position to be able to build all the units in one phase of construction, so there'll be a couple of phases as that goes on.
Sure.
But yeah, it's, they want to start this year.
So just one question. So you brought up how you would have the main entrance being off of Jason instead of McDougal. Is that correct?
Yes.
So would you keep that entrance exit there at the end, or is that going to change?
This is just an emergency access.
Okay.
So it's only for fire access. We'll probably use that for some snow clearing and different things like that, but really it's not intended for a public access.
Okay.
So on the north side, you said that there was a 10-foot setback?
Yeah.
Are, is there also a 10-foot setback on the east side, correct?
Yes, there's, we're setback 10 feet.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
And so on the east side, it looks like, is there little trees? I mean, is there going to be some trees planted on that side also?
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me see if I can get my...
I just saw a little bit of it.
...to catch up. So again, this is just not necessarily a landscape plan, it's just for visual representation, but you can kind of see what it potentially could look like. You know, those are all evergreen trees. We probably wouldn't do that, but that shows the landscape that we intend to place along there.
I know that some units have people that live on-site. Is anybody going to be living here?
No.
What's the hours of operation?
So that I can't answer. I'd probably defer to the ownership group to answer that.
Yeah, at this time, we've considered about 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., just to not have traffic coming through there. But again, with the entrance being composing an already existing commercial building, we think that the impact, if it was smoking later, would be almost nothing to the neighborhood and certainly nothing I'm going to do with this tour in the house at all.
Cool.
Any other questions?
I got some.
All right, thank you, Mitch.
I may give you guys your mind.
We will have the public come up and testify in just one moment. First, we're going to hear from Matt, if we could get the staff report.
Mr. Chair, commission members, Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city of Pocatello. The subject property includes four tax parcels, totally 2.01 acres, more or less. The parcels are located between Jason Avenue and McDougal Street, specifically addressed as 3934 Jason Avenue. The zoning for the subject property is commercial general, and the proposed use is self-storage, which are permitted in the commercial zoning district only through approval of a conditional use permit. The property is flat, with a history of code enforcement cases based on land uses not being legally established dating back as far as 2016. Based on Code Section 17.02.1330, criteria for review, staff finds that the proposal will be harmonious in scale, mass, coverage, density, and intensity with the adjacent permitted uses within the commercial general district. As proposed, the use is compatible with the existing and permitted land uses within the area. Existing uses within a 300-foot buffer surrounding the proposed development site include a boat storage repair business, a vacant building with parking, which was a common-sense convenience store many years ago, and a mix of residential apartments and single-family residential north and west of the site. The single-family residents to the north are zone commercial general. As such, transitional landscape buffer is not required per Code Section 17.05.270. More is a setback required. However, staff is recommending that a 10-foot landscape setback with a site obscuring fence be installed on the north property line, and this is outlined in Condition Number 5 of each staff report. Property is bounded by two residential streets, as noted, Jason on the east and McDougal on the west. Therefore, 10-foot landscape setbacks will be required. Also, the code requires one tree for every 35 feet of frontage. The minimum parking required is six parking spaces. As proposed, there are four parking spaces adjacent to the office. Therefore, the applicant shall provide two additional spaces on-site. The parking requirement is one parking space per employee and one per 50 storage units, which is where you come up with the six. All drive aisles are proposed to be paved. Adequate public facilities and services are existing and available to this subject property. Proposed use will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. Proposed self-service storage units will generate less traffic to traffic patterns and municipal services than many of the uses permitted outright in the commercial zoning district, such as eating and drinking establishments and retail shops. The units are designed to have a single, secure entrance from Jason Avenue. The office building will be the tallest structure located at the entrance, being approximately 25 feet in height. The maximum height permitted in the commercial general district is 60 feet. Notice of public hearing was mailed to political subdivisions and all property owners within 300-foot radius of the external boundaries of the land being considered on January 28, 2020, in order that they may provide comment on the proposed application. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal on January 23, 2020, and a signed post on the subject property on January 28, 2020. Staff received three phone calls regarding the development. We have not received any written correspondence at this time. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you, Matt. Questions for Matt? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will now open up to hear from the public and take in public testimony. If we could start with any who are in favor of this application that would like to give testimony? Seeing none, any that are neutral to the application?
I don't have no application, but I've lived out of whatever. I mean, I've lived out on Samuel Street.
Why don't you come forward, and if you would state your name?
My name is Steve Hall.
And where you're from?
I live at 843 Samuel Street.
Perfect.
It's, you know, it's really cool if you want to build this out here, but this is a flood stage. This is a flood plain right here. If you're going to build all this, where's the water going to go? I mean, that's my main purpose here, is where's the water going to go? I mean, you can see where my house is. It's right across from, I mean, it's, there's water that is, I've seen it where it's two and a half foot deep right there, and it all runs off into that property. And I mean, yes, there's a park right behind us, right behind me, that everybody says that you store water at. There was an engineer from the street department that said that there was, this thing can hold four foot of water out there. It can't. And so where's, I mean, I don't care if you guys build that, but let's get the water gone. I mean, because all these people, I've seen all these people get their basements, and when the water backs up, it blows up into their, I mean, even on their ceilings and stuff. I mean, that's one of the parts that we need to fix. I mean, if you're going to cover up that drainage part of right there, we need to push the water somewhere. I mean, we need to get the water out of there. I mean, that's, I mean, that's my whole bitch. I mean, I mean, I'm not saying nothing. I mean, guys, go ahead and build it. I mean, it looks cool. I mean, I've looked at it and everything, but where in the hell's the water going to go?
Okay.
I mean, that's something that we all need to look at.
Right.
I mean, I've got a, that house that I live in has been there ever since 1954 or something like that. Everybody builds up. I'm like in a cookie sheet right now. I mean, but still, I'm getting dirty and everything. I mean, I'm not arguing about, but we just need to get drainage. I mean, that's the main thing, is drainage, because you guys have never seen it. I mean, when a freaky storm comes up, it comes on.
Okay.
And so...
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
How about you guys do your own thing?
Is there anyone else that would like to give public testimony? Okay, with that, applicant, would you like to rebut?
We appreciate the comments on the drainage, and we are aware of the drainage issue out there. We have one of the guys in our office actually lives on McDougal Street. When this developed, there was a few times when Scott actually couldn't come to work because the street was flooded. So we know about that area. Again, and we have pictures of this site, you know, having water on it, you know, not just an inch, you know, a fair amount. So we are aware of it. We haven't really come to some resolution as to how to fix it. We'll obviously be working with staff and trying to come up with some possibilities, and I think he may be talking about, I don't know, some park here. I mean, there might be a possibility to be able to get some of the, you know, some type of overflow. Right now, where we're doing an improvement, we're changing what's there. There's maybe an opportunity to create some positive change for that area. So again, I won't say that we have a full design solution, but I do know that my clients don't want to be in a situation where, you know, their project fills up with water. This is a fortress, and so, you know, if we get water inside there, it's probably going to want to stay in there. So again, we are aware of the drainage as an issue. So a couple of things in Matt's staff report that I just wanted to mention. One, the fortress style, we believe, kind of eliminates the need for a site obscuring fence. So again, if you can kind of visualize this from the neighbors to the north, again, that's, you know, you're going to see what looks like a fence there. So hopefully, we wouldn't necessarily put a fence in that area. It could, I think we're showing one, but that would just be a landscape buffer to that, to that fence, to that building. I think the fence would be redundant there, mostly. The other thing was the parking spaces. So just, just for the record, although our model doesn't necessarily reflect it, the site plan that we submitted does, and there is parking available. This is an extra-wide drive aisle here, and there's a parking space on the end of each, there's two here, one there, one there, and one there, on the end of each, each end cap of those units. And I could probably maybe show that to you on our site plan, I think. So you can see one there, two there, one there, and one there. So essentially, we have a total of nine spaces on-site versus the four that we showed. These four are probably going to be, you know, generally for the public to come in and do business at the office, but these would be, maybe somebody would park inside there and go to their unit or whatever. So I think other than that, I think we've addressed all the comments staff has had. As far as public goes, I can answer questions if you have them. Otherwise, we'd like to see it.
Is the reason why water is there is because it's a low point, or is it because just maybe the curtain gutter is not fantastic there, and water comes down?
I think generally, it's a little lower in this area. There was a storm at one time that flooded that entire region, right? I mean, I don't, it wasn't just this property. Scott, let's go back to Google Earth, but Scott lives up at the end of McDougal Street, and, you know, there was water up there. Like, it was...
The whole street was covered.
Yeah, yeah. This whole street was full. So it's not just this property that floods, it's that entire neighborhood. And that was probably a little bit of an anomaly, but I think there, you know, we do recognize that there is an issue there, and we want to try to do some positive things. We've preserved this area. Again, we believe that's going to have... Again, we believe that's going to have a large, I don't want to call it a moat, but probably something to take a large amount of water in this area, but we also probably need to create some sort of conveyance out of there. And where that goes, we still need to work with staff and try to kind of figure that. But this, you know, everything slopes down to here. Everything in the town slopes to the river, and this is headed toward the river, and we have some barriers in this area with South Fifth and the Lauer Rocks and different things like that. So it does create kind of an area where a low point exists. And it has flooded in the past, and we're certainly aware of it.
I think, no doubt, I mean, it looks awesome. Fantastic job. Looks sweet, and I think it would be great for the area. But my, my simple brain that I have, you know, speaks to me saying, why would you want to build something if, you know, earlier, two years ago, four years, whenever it was, there was three feet of water there, you know?
I think three feet might be a bit of a, probably two is a bit of an exaggeration.
We'll go with the solid foot and a half.
Maybe a foot. I probably, I have. So, I mean, just visualize this. It's not a great deal of money to raise your site by a foot, okay? And then you're out, you know, it's not going to flood anymore. But we don't necessarily want to do that, because then that just kind of pushes it somewhere else.
Somebody else.
So we want to try to, we want to try to, you know, effect some positive change down there. We're going to make sure that our site doesn't flood, okay? Whatever we do down there, it's not, we're going to protect our site. And in the process of doing that, we want to be able to help the neighborhood and some other, you know, every, improve that area so that it, we hopefully can, can fix it. You know, if it, if it meant, you know, possibly we could create a little storm system that came over to the park, and instead of us creating, you know, an onsite system, we could defer our system over there, and we could couple that with some collection with the city. You know, again, I'm just, I don't, I don't have the answers, but that would be, in my mind, a way that could benefit our owners, because they could, instead of putting money onto their site system, we could put that into something that would be more of a regional system that could help fix the problem. Now, he says, you know, again, I haven't looked at the engineering of that, but that would be one of the first solutions I'd be looking at. Could we put water into this park somehow? And how can we pay for it? Well, we could trade some of the improvements that my client's going to be doing for that system, and that's how we could help fix it. Now, whether or not that can all come together, I don't know.
All right.
Hopefully it can.
So I respect your honesty in the sense that you want to protect your property. I mean, that makes the most sense, but yeah, I do believe it is a concern where, where is that water going to go with a place that it has historically flooded? So what, I mean, has the conversation started with the, and maybe city staff can weigh in on this, has the conversation been started with engineering, street, environmental?
We've had some basic discussions with the city about the issue and how we would like to, you know, again, effect some positive change. Has there been a plan developed? No. We're not, my client isn't going to spend money designing a site until he has approval that he can actually do it. And again, it's not a flood plain, okay? It's not identified as a flood plain. We do know there is a history of flooding there, but it's not, it hasn't been identified as a, as a flood hazard area by any, any studies or anything like that. But again, hopefully, we can all work together with the staff, and you can, you can let them comment as well, but to do something that would be a benefit to the area. Just because this, you know, the water's running there, it's not necessarily our water that we're dealing with, you know? It's coming from city streets and previous developments. So we want to make it better, and I will say that whatever we leave this area with, it'll be better than what it is today. It'll be a better change. But whether it will fix the problem, you know, I'm not sure.
Because you're aware that there has been flooding, but I see that you haven't made any retention areas or anything like, is, I'm curious about that.
So again, we haven't finished the design of the site, but this, this is part of our property here on the, kind of this south side.
Question. So your property extends beyond where that brown and then the gray strip?
Yes.
So it comes all the way down to the yellow line?
Yes.
So something, so something could?
Yeah, and so we envisioned that to be a detention area of some sort, and from there, we could, you know, we could potentially do some collection here that could get it into that and potentially convey it, you know, over to the park somehow.
Yeah, so what you're saying is that we will, you would like this to get approved before we work on a flood plan? Because no reason gets the cart in front of the horse, right, until this gets approved, right?
I, again, it's just like every other project. We don't have all the details worked out of a flood situation on any other project that we ever present at preliminary stages. So we are going to work through it. We'll comply with the city code with what we have to do, and we're going to make it better there as much as we can. You know, again, we, I don't want to be negative about it, but sometimes, sometimes things move slow, and on the private side, things move fast. And what happens is, we had another situation, and you guys are probably familiar with this, a few of you are. We did another storage unit up on Pocatello Creek Road that had a flooding issue, that his prop, you know, our client's property was kind of the receiver of a lot of water that came down through there. And we attempted to, in fact, we facilitated meetings with the city, with the county, our owners, some of the owners in this surrounding area, to try to solve the problem. We came up, we said, look, this is what we want to do. We'd like to, you know, we need you guys to do some, we'll do some, here's what we want to do, and it died. Like, nobody did their part. We, our client was only willing to wait for, you know, a few months to try to get it solved, and we facilitated the meetings, so it never happened. So now we're, we've improved it, we created some drainage channels, and we created some drainage infrastructure there to improve the situation from what it is now, but we didn't solve it. It could have been solved if we would have all gotten the timing together and budgets and just everything never really totally aligned, and I'm not sure what's going to happen here. All I can say is, we will comply with the codes, we're going to make it better than what it is today. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mitch. Merrill, if we could have you come forward and kind of address some of these flooding things and shit and like?
Merrill Quell, the Public Works Engineer for the City of Pocatello. This site, I'm very familiar with this site. It, over the last several years, is, with the flooding, I would say that this site would have anywhere about six inches of water on it, you know? And this area that's, in this area around Samuel and that, you'll get about a foot of water down through here and up. We did have that about eight, ten years ago. We had the big storm that hit Humboldt all to the, to the east there, and did a lot of damage over in the Johnny Creek area and everything, too. And that's one of the bigger storms that we're talking about here. There is some water here. You might get up to eighteen inches of water, up to maybe two feet of water in this area right here is a low spot, because this area right here is a pump station. That's how the water is. It is a lower area. There is the development that has been built out around here from the city, but the city limits is just right there at the top of the street, which goes into the county, which is a little bit of county property, and then all the way up the gullies to the BLM property. So we get all the water that comes off of, we get them freak storms that will come off of those, those hill sites. There is, we have looked at some areas up the top of Samuel. There's some of the storm ponds that we've looked at in the last year and a half that we need to get back onto private property. They have been filled in with concrete and debris that we've noticed. We learned that last year. So we've got to address that, coming off of there and coming off into county properties and into the city limits. The other part is, is that South Fifth, down along here, all the way from about where the state police is, LKQ and that area there drains all the way in, again, water coming from the county into the city. Along there, no drainage system and that, so it comes right in. It gathers up some in the park. We're in the way of, right now, trying to get a grant for sidewalks and so forth. It'll go through the city limits from this area at Samuel to the city limits there, and then through there, some, possibly doing some work to alleviate and let the water go into the park above the parking lot in the park to alleviate that. And then also, we are working on this design right now for curb gutter or some sidewalk and eighty-eight ramps and everything in this intersection right here. We did get a grant and that, to work on that and some improvements here. In doing that, there's a catch basin or a manhole, a storm manhole right here where the hand is. It's a shallow basin where that line comes down Samuel, down through this easement that could be used for stormwater retention, and then it turns and goes over, and then it's lifted up and then brought over to this area where it drops back into the state system that has a, I believe it's a twenty-four-inch line to about this area, and then eighteen-inch line to here. In that improvements, we're looking at a pipe that the options to, it'll be higher up in this manhole I'm talking about here, bringing it out here. That won't drain all the storms, but it will be an overflow to where this, this gets up to about eighteen inches through this area. It will start spilling up and back up into the pipe and start spilling into here gravity-wise versus the pumps trying to keep up. One of the reasons it drains so flat here, there's so, so much here ponding and that is because these line right here is, it is dead flat. And because of the grade and the terrain out there, trying to get water from this whole area here, in this area through here, being so flat, trying to move the water. So the city at this time has, is looking at a couple of options there and looks forward to working with this developer in the easement area here to see what could be done to alleviate some of that, those issues. And whether this is a storage unit or a gas station or whatever could go in this commercial area, we're going to be at the same problem no matter what. And this problem, as been pointed out, is with code enforcement issues in the last several years and over the last many years, where it's sitting vacant and, again, code enforcement for weeds and so forth. Looking forward to seeing some of that development there that would take some of that, goes off and hopefully improve the neighborhood. So I don't know if you have any other further questions?
One question I've got is, do you see obstacles to trying to create some storage in the park that would come from that direction? I know you talked about trying to get some of that water from, from the south, but coming from the north, is that something that can be explored?
We've looked at that and explored that in the park. The only issue that I could say there is at this time is timing and funding, because the park really, to adequately do what it needs to do, this whole baseball field area, which is a little practice field and that, this whole area all through here and around some of these trees probably needs to be dropped, you know, a foot to two foot for one. The other thing is trying to come in, to come in right here somewhere to pick up some of this water, again, being flat and even dropping that, trying to get the water here. But what I said here is trying to gather up this water here with a project to get the water that's coming down Fifth, coming in a little bit into the park and pond, but continues down, turns right into Samuel and ponds right there. So, because it jumps this catch basin, this last one here, but whatever gets by here goes right into there. So we are looking at doing some stuff up above here, getting that grant, that sidewalk. If we get that, we'll be doing that within the next year that we'd be able to come into there. But we have constantly talked about what could be done, what needs to be done to be able to come through there. So we have looked at those options, and there is some. It's just getting the project in and the project funded.
Okay. Working with the developer here on this in some type of joint project to get water there, do you see that as a possibility?
That's a possibility if the developer would like to, to do there, and I know that he doesn't want to solve all the silly problems and that, too. The issue is just getting the funding from the city side to be able to, to do our part is the, that's the hurdle.
Other questions from? Okay, thank you, Merrill. I have one more question from Matt, if I could. So Matt, the applicant has kind of asked for one of these conditions, that being the six-foot fence be not a condition here because they feel it's redundant. Can you speak to that a little bit and talk about? And I do not remember, so it says the rear property, but I assume that's that north property line as opposed to the, the street side line that you're referring to?
Yes, it would be the, it would be the north property line that are kind of adjacent to the existing residential. You know, based on, based on the kind of the schematic that they have with the actual landscaping in front of the storage units and the number of trees that are proposed with the landscape, it seems reasonable to me, because I would think that it's kind of redundant. It's, you know, I think that they'll do some kind of aesthetic. It's not just going to be something like, okay, you know, whatever, but I, I think that's reasonable. The other thing that I'd like to mention, and maybe, maybe the commission might consider, and we've done this on, I think, one or two other storage units, but it's not in my staff report, is one of just hours of operation. I think that they mentioned seven to eight, which is reasonable. But I could see if it was, if you didn't have some type of timeframe on there, somebody comes in one o'clock in the morning, makes a bunch of noise, that kind of thing, might be a consideration. Other than that, I have no thoughts.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I could ask one question there, sorry. So are there fences there currently, like residential fences, or would it be, you know, residential land and then up to the landscaping?
All right, you want to answer that?
Yes, so currently, there are, at the north edge of the property, there is a residential fence, and that would remain, we wouldn't disrupt, that would preserve and protect the residential fence. And then there'd be a ten-foot buffer, and then a nine-foot, you know, the back edge of the building would be nine feet, and that would, it's going to be aesthetic enough that it will look better than most any fence we could put in, actually, with landscaping buffer between it. So it's going to look really quite good. Mitch has done a good job of explaining that already, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Question for?
Matt?
Yeah, I think so, please. Do you feel like, you recommended six parking places, and then he showed us those others on the, within the complex. Are you comfortable? Does that seem reasonable to you?
Yes, it does, yes.
Very good. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. The item's open for discussion. Commissioners, thoughts, comments?
Well, I think with the flooding issue, having this development in there would actually help with. help with, having development there could possibly, if they're willing to work with the city, help alleviate at least some of the problem. So it's better than no development.
Sounds like it's definitely something that needs to be addressed in the future. I don't think that that's up to you guys to, to take care of. It sounds like it's been a constant issue for a while. So I don't think that, as much as I, I wanna look out for your guys' property and the, the surrounding properties, I don't think that the flooding really determines the motion if the application meets all of the requirements.
I guess that's, so my comments I guess is, first of all, thank you for the application and it seems that you guys did enough due diligence and typically in these cases, you guys are taking on the commercial risk. So clearly you guys are being the investors. The only concern I think that has been raised is with regards to water and the site, but that is really not of your issue, but it's more of kind of something the public needs to address. And it seems like our public works does have adequate plans in place that will further mitigate this issue and abate concerns in the future and hopefully the two will be able to coordinate as we move forward.
Thank you. Can I kind of share the same thoughts? I think having some development in this area is going to be good, it's going to benefit the area. I know that there's probably been some struggles right along there, keeping businesses in and stuff going. I see this as something that could be solid and, and be there for a good amount of time and aesthetically pleasing for the, for the area overall. I also agree that the, the six-foot fence thing there is, is redundant and would definitely support a motion that excluded that from the conditions.
Would you like a motion made right now on that one?
That would be, we can, I'm open to a motion on the whole thing if somebody would like to do that.
Oh, I would like to make a motion that the six-foot fence not be part of the motion.
So the way that we would do that is making a motion, whether it's approving or denying with the staff conditions, excluding the six-foot fence and then that can all be taken care of at once if, if that's a motion.
Make a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from Attic Staff Storage Limited Liability Corporation for a conditional use permit allowed for new storage units to be developed within the Commercial General zoning district, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter seventeen, point zero-two, point one-three-zero of Pocatello Municipal Code. If the following, if the following staff conditions are met, excluding the six-foot requirement, which is I believe staff condition number five. And authorize the chair to sign the findings of the fact.
A second?
Very good. Any discussion on the motion?
No, sir.
Okay, Ace Lynn, would you call the vote?
Lou?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Front?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sattaville?
Yes. Very good, motion carries. That concludes our business for the evening. Thank you for coming.